It's called to order, the Brainerd City Council. It's Monday, December 1st, 2025, 7:30 PM in council chambers. Tony, please call the roll.
Jaeger.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Bevins.
Here.
Chesok.
Yes.
Johnson.
Here.
Stunek. Oday.
Here.
Bado.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we're looking for approval of the agenda.
So move Johnson.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. That motion carries. Okay, all right, we got something going on here.
That's Nellie, sorry.
All right, next we have the consent calendar. This is a notice to the public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Looking for that motion.
Approve consent.
Motion by Chesok, second by Bevins. Any discussion? Tony, please call the roll.
Jaeger.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
Chesok.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Oday.
Yes. All right, we are underway. Next we have number six. This is a public forum. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. Time limits may be imposed. So at 7:32, we will open the public forum. If you're here to approach the council on anything not on the agenda, please do so now. And if you're online, press star three. That'll raise your hand and let us know. And I'll ask if you're here to address the council on anything not on the agenda, please come forward now. Looks like we do not have anybody tonight. No one online, Max? All right. Still 7:32. We will close public forum. Moving on to number seven, this is presentations. Tonight we have three different presentations, so I'm going to ask that we save our questions for the end of the presentations, just so we can get through them all a little more efficiently. 7A, the first presentation we have, this is the annual charter presentation for the center. So whoever is here to represent the center, please come forward and state your name.
I'm Darcy Wacoyak, Executive Director with the center.
Welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to address you all and say good evening, Mayor Bado and the city council. I'm Darcy Wacoyak, the new Executive Director of the center, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening. Thank you for your support and the opportunity to share how the center is serving our community. The center is a welcoming place where Lakes area residents ages 45-plus come together to connect, learn, and support one another. Our mission is simple but powerful, to encourage mature adults to engage in healthy living, socialization, lifelong learning, and community connection. With Brainerd's municipal funding, the center can offer programs, exercise classes, social groups, and learning opportunities without relying solely on membership fees. This ensures that older adults remain active, connected, and less isolated, which benefits their health, mental well-being, and community involvement. On any given day, you might find line dancers in the great room, creative crafters and painters in the craft room, or a friendly game of cards underway. Members enjoy a wide mix of activities from bone builders, wellness class, chair yoga, book clubs, band jam sessions, bingo, and luncheon learns. The signature favorites include Thursday's donut days and our member-made gifts in the gift shop. Beyond activities, we also serve as a practical resource, providing space for Meals on Wheels distribution, LSS nutrition services, congregate dining, legal aid resources, and volunteers making telecare check-in calls for those living alone. Loneliness and isolation are growing challenges, especially for older adults at the center. We create daily opportunities for connection through meals, coffee groups, games, creative outlets, and special events. Many members tell us the center is their lifeline to friendship and belonging. Some of our most popular programs include the Second Monday dinners, card recycling, quilting, Veterans Coffee, the Platinum Players Theater Group, and the Center Singers Choir. We promote wellness through our fitness classes, our cardio and strength training rooms, along with educational workshops on health, safety, and self-care. We also co-host a caregiver support group, Memory Cafe, a navigating grief group, all designed to support physical, emotional, and mental well-being. Our hope is by keeping older adults healthy and socially connected, this will result in fewer costly health interventions, helping them maintain their independence longer, and allowing them to continue contributing to the community through volunteerism and civic engagement. We partner with local businesses, nonprofits, and schools to bring resources directly to our members. From the outreach programs Food Pantry to LSS Meals on Wheels, AARP driving classes, and Lakes Area Memory Awareness Advocates, collaboration is at the heart of what we do. We also foster intergenerational connection through reading with kindergarteners, our upcoming Teens and Tech events, and community education talks. Our toy and doll makers distribute their items to local shelters, medical facilities, preschools, and emergency responders. This strengthens our community one relationship at a time. We are actively working with the Brainerd for All Ages to support the city's goal of making Brainerd a place where people of all ages can thrive. Behind every program is a person whose life has been touched. Kathy, who lost her spouse, found relationship and comfort at the center. She calls it her home away from home. Harley feels a renewed sense of purpose, volunteering and giving back through the quilting group. Norma shares that the center has helped her build lasting friendships, given her a renewed sense of meaning and purpose. These stories remind us that what happens at the center isn't just programming, it's life-changing connection. As we look ahead, the center remains committed to serving as a hub of connection, wellness, and community for older adults in Brainerd. We are deeply grateful for the city's ongoing support. Your investment makes it possible for our older residents to stay healthy, engaged, and socially connected. When the city of Brainerd chooses to fund the center, you are affirming that older adults are valued, contributing members of our community. This support not only enhances their quality of life, but also strengthens Brainerd as a whole by helping retain long-term residents, preserving the tax base, fostering community leadership, and sustaining the volunteer networks and civic organizations that rely on this vibrant population. Your partnership allows us to continue offering accessible programs and essential services that keep older adults active, independent, and involved. It is a meaningful investment with far-reaching benefits. I invite each one of you to come and tour the center, meet our members, and see firsthand the connection, purpose, and joy that your support creates every day. We would be honored to show you the impact your stewardship makes in the lives of the people that we serve. Thank you for your time, for your leadership, and for your continued commitment to building a strong, connected, age-friendly Brainerd.
Thank you. Anybody have questions?
I do, Mr. Oday.
Mr. Chesok, go ahead.
Darcy, thank you very much. Pleasure to meet you. What's the membership cost for a year?
$25 per year.
Okay, and then is there an age requirement?
45 plus. So you can start at 45 as an associate member, and you become a full-fledged member at 55.
Okay, so do members get half-priced donuts? Because Mr. Bevins told me he's a member.
That's a good try, but as far as I know, they are still full-price for members. But if you volunteer on the donut crew, you do get to take home some donuts as part of your pay.
So it sounds like maybe four of us here would be able to be members because there's some youngsters here at the table. Anyway, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
Anyone else? Thank you, Darcy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Keep doing a great job. All right, next we have 7B. This is the annual charter presentation for the Northland Arboretum. All right, just come on up and state your name.
My name's Trevor Pumnia, 623 Willow Street, Brainerd, Minnesota. I'm the Executive Director of the Northland Arboretum.
Welcome.
Thanks for having me, council. All right, today we're just going to talk about a few things. I'll talk about the introduction of the arboretum. Most of the people have heard this presentation. Some of you maybe as many as 52 times. We've been in business a long time, so we'll keep it short with the recreation, education, conservation component. I do want to talk about how we spent some of the funds this year. We did a lot of improvements to the Nordic skiing, the hiking trails, snowshoe trails. The garden renovations were probably one of the most costly, but we do donate 2,500 pounds of fresh produce back to the community, so it's an important project for us. Also renovating the wells and irrigation systems so people don't have to carry buckets and hoses has greatly improved volunteer morale. Some of the things that the funds do go for is staffing and operational capacity. These are a small portion. Most of this is driven by our member-driven fees and undesignated receipts, which this year we received a record-high undesignated receipts, which allows me to then leverage those funds to get additional grant dollars so we can continue operating at like low-cost or no-cost free community events like Arbor Day and low-cost experiences like Haunted Trail. We did do some maintenance to the facilities because the building is frankly pretty old. It needs some work in the HVAC departments, and there are about $27,000 to replace, so we have went with the budget Band-Aid version of that for now until we can get into our state funding, which I'll talk about later. So our daily maintenance operations are supported by levy funding, but I'm going to talk a little bit how we leverage those funds later. The major accomplishments this year were getting the master plan approved. In 52 years, the Northland Arboretum has never had a master plan. That makes it very difficult to procure state funding, for the county to want to work with you. Frankly, for a lot of organizations, when you don't have a master plan, they just don't have a lot of faith in your organization. So getting that approved by Crow Wing County, the Board of Directors, and then ultimately the State Committee from the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission was probably the biggest thing that's ever happened at the arboretum besides getting the visitor center. Last year, we broke record attendance with 41,800 visitors, most of them being Brainerd residents. So we're able to use placer.ai data to create boundaries to determine that the people that are helping to fund our organization are actually using it. So just over 60%, a lot of Baxter, Crow Wing County, but we're starting to see a little bit more micro and macro tourism as we develop recreation amenities. We had really good Haunted Trail attendance again despite the rainy Thursday. It's our biggest fundraiser of the year, and it funds about a fifth of our operations for the year. So we're happy to keep adding to that and keep making changes to that so it stays fresh. The bike park, we got rained out. Like, it rained every third day, and the skid steer was stuck in the mud, and we really wanted to finish that thing. But we're looking at having to finish it next year. We couldn't get dump trucks in and out of there. It was just a muddy mess. And plus, we didn't have a skid steer. We just won a skid steer and a big grant, which was really cool. We built this huge pollinator, lighted sledding hill. So for little kids in Brainerd, there's not a whole lot of places to come sledding if you're that two-to-five age range. So we just put together a lighted sledding hill with some materials we have laying around. New growth in membership, and our donor society launched, and we're doing quite well there. Significant volunteer growth as we've continued to build recreation amenities. Number four. Okay, so everybody knows about the bike park. We got about halfway through the bike park this year. We just started pushing snow up and laying down ice for our forest ice skating trail that we'll be putting in in the next week. We're hoping to get a bunch of ice frozen and down by this weekend and start running our freshly purchased Zamboni next week. Disc golf course development was approved as a master plan, just hoping to create a regional draw, much like what you see up in Breezy Point with those premier kind of disc golf courses. The land acquisition, and I'll be talking to the county about this, but our application for the 120-acre acquisition project was denied this year. We didn't have enough municipal and county matching funds, so I'll be asking the Brainerd City Council if they would approve us to leverage those funds so that we can obtain regional designation funding for the acquisition of, to sell the land to Crow Wing County and then lease it back with recreational use limitations. So yeah, with this regional park designation, we have access to $13 million in state funding through legacy funds. So this will be a whole new page for the arboretum, and we hope to become the biggest tourism, regional, outdoor recreation facility in the region while still offering probably the cheapest summer camp in town. Okay. There you go.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Chesok, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Pumnia. Any other municipality in Crow Wing County or anywhere around provide you dollars?
We do have some agreements with the city of Baxter where we do some mowing and maintenance of some of their facilities. Their estimated in-kind contributions are between $50,000 and $60,000 annually since we run the county's largest compost operation, or second-largest compost operation. So with that, and honestly, they built the sledding hill for us. We can't move 400 yards of material, and they can just bring a big loader in. So the in-kind contributions are pretty significant. Also, if we can strike a logging deal with Crow Wing County to thin the red pine stand that badly needs thinned and replant that, we're looking at some serious contributions there. Or we could also leverage that funding to then procure state funding for development of ski chalets or ADA-accessible paths or whatever we decide that we want to procure in the master plan.
But as far as any direct tax dollars, is the city of Brainerd the only one?
City of Brainerd, yep.
From Baxter? I know Baxter has quite a bit.
Yep, yep.
All right.
They treat us really well. Yep, thank you, sir.
Johnson?
Thank you. You're doing a great job, Trevor. I really like to see what you have going on out there. The bike trail is awesome. The skating trail, as everybody at the hockey rink, really excited.
Okay.
You said you were going to start trying to get water, start trying to get ice this weekend. How long is the trail, and when do you expect it to be open weather participating?
Weather contingent. So what's initially approved is, and we went with a shorter trail, just under a half of a mile of trail, because there's a lot of ups, downs, and turns. And so a lot of these forest ice skating trails are pretty flat, but we're finding that some of the newer ones are using their drag system to kind of capture the water as it freezes behind the water tankers. We've got about just over 20,000 pounds of water tankers that we can run pretty consistently all day, and we got pretty good pressure out of our two wells. So we're hoping to be able to have a good 6 to 8 inches ice base down within the next two weeks. Around Minnesota and Wisconsin, we're seeing them open around December 21st. And so that's kind of our target date. I wouldn't be bummed out if we started a little sooner.
Hopefully Christmas break, and I guess it's as wide as a Zamboni then?
Yeah, we actually went to Zamboni widths.
Two widths, Zamboni widths.
Yeah, we went with 10 feet, and so, yeah, double Zamboni. We went with 10 feet because a lot of the videos that I see with skates spinning, and I don't know, it just freaked me out. So I didn't like the 6-foot or the 5-foot wide paths, so.
All right, thank you. Keep it up.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Councilman.
Trevor, could you just expand just very briefly? I don't want to hold you too long, but you mentioned asking permission to be able to leverage the funds from the city of Brainerd. Is there something that you need from the city? Have you been working with our staff at all for something that allows that?
Yeah, I made a mistake in not asking for a more specific letter of support when I was doing my designation process. We obtained regional designation so quickly that I only had 31 days to submit my funding application. So it wasn't able to go in front of the council with the amendments that I would have needed. And so it would probably be a 10% funding match, which would be the land acquisition property was about $534,000. So it would be utilizing about $53,000 of the levy funds to then leverage the 90% state funds to finish that procurement. We would actually have an investment account at that point that would accrue some decent interest, and then we could begin leveraging those funds to get state accessibility fundings for ADA accessibility door openers. More importantly, none of our gardens are ADA accessible. Only our nature playscape is at this time. And so being able to get our primary visitors to those locations is pretty important to us.
Okay, thank you. Well, if you need more information from us, if there's something that the council can do, please get us that information whenever.
Very good.
Any more questions, guys? Looks like not.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Trevor. Next up, we have 7C. This is the Brainerd Public Utilities Operating and Capital Budget Presentation. Mr. Sandy?
Good evening, Mayor and council. How is everyone tonight?
Couldn't be better.
What everyone has been waiting for all year, on the edge of your seats.
A favorite meeting.
Tonight, so I have Danny with me here tonight. He'll be presenting the operating side of our budget. I'm up here tonight presenting the capital side of our 2026 to 2030 Capital Improvement Plan, both of which were reviewed and approved by the BPU Commission on November 25th and are now in front of the council for consideration. I'd like to begin with a high-level overview of the capital improvement program. Across our water, electric, and wastewater systems, the next five years include some of the most significant investments BPU has undertaken. These projects focus on long-term reliability, regulatory compliance, and maintaining essential public infrastructure. I'm going to start off with the electrical capital program. So as part of our annual system reinforcements, we focus on overhead and underground improvements, directional drilling, and transformer replacements. Those improvements remain the foundation to our electrical system, and they average between $900,000 and $1.2 million a year in investments that we're putting into the electrical distribution system. A major project coming down the line for us is in 2029 with the replacement and upgrade of our downtown substation project. That's programmed at $2.5 million for year 2029. Key investments into the hydro facility that are in the plan include a roof replacement on the powerhouse where the generators are at. We continue to investigate the generator pit six replacement, and that's a two-year modernization project totaling $4.85 million in the years 2028 and 2029. We do have a system impact assessment planned for 2030 for a total capital cost of $350,000. That's a pretty high-level overview of some of the major investments. And on the electrical side of the system, those investments modernize our core equipment and enhance our redundancy. Being that the hydro dam is a locally-owned resource, it's an important asset for the commission in meeting the state's requirement of achieving 2040 100% carbon-free energy. Moving on to the capital water side, Danny, if you want to go there. The Water Department's capital plan is the most significant component of our capital improvement plan. The centerpiece of the plan is planned for going through a construction manager at-risk project that the BPU Commission recently approved, and that is to basically design and construct our reclamation and backwash tank at the water treatment plant. We have that in the capital plan funded at $2.825 million in 2026 and 2027. That project is supported by a $5 million state, $5 million in state funding to reduce the total local cost. We have a new well, number nine, that's scheduled for construction in 2027 at $5 million. That is to support system redundancy and meeting the Minnesota Department of Health requirements. So the big project on everyone's mind lately is the planning of a future water treatment plant with staging costs of $3.8 million in 2028 and $4 million in 2030, consistent with previous requests for roughly a $58 million water treatment facility. Lead service line replacements are a big topic of discussion right now. We received notice here in the last month that the city of Brainerd has been funded for a little over $2.5 million in lead service line replacements in 2026, with the expectations of more external funding coming from the lead service line replacement program through the Minnesota Department of Health in the future. BPU continues to coordinate with city reconstruction projects. Due to changes in MinDOT's Highway 210 schedule, BPU will need to fully fund the 210 utility work in 2026, with bonding proposed early in the year to support cash flow. Our budget that was presented last year had those costs spread out over quite a few years, but knowing now that the funds need to be upfront to MinDOT, we have planned for those costs all in 2026. Some of just the standard system reliability and redundancy things we're working on are SCADA improvement, booster station improvements, wellhouse upgrades, and metering improvements throughout the five-year period. And last but not least, I will move on to wastewater. The wastewater CIP includes one of the largest single-capital projects in BPU's long-range plan. Key components include wastewater treatment plant expansion and biosolids improvement. We currently have $12 million in the budget in 2026 and another $12 million in 2027 to address capacity, biosolid storage, and permitting needs. This project is on the state's project priority list and is advancing with the Joint Wastewater Management Board. We are on the project priority list through the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency for our main lift station replacement project. We have $494,000 programmed in 2026 for the design and bidding aspect of that project, and we're on the project priority list for $7 million to be eligible for low-interest loans through the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority. There are several carry-forward items on the wastewater side that we did not get done in 2025 that are included in the budget for 2026. That includes some fencing improvements, HVAC controls, some grid screening equipment, and door replacements. So those were moved forward into 2026. And with that, I think I will pass it over to Danny to take the reins from the operating budget standpoint.
Thanks, Paul. That's Daniel Locke, Finance Manager.
There he is.
For the utility.
Do you want me to run the screen?
That's fine. I think I can handle it.
Does he have a microphone?
Are you hearing me?
I can hear you. Do you have a microphone so the people at home can?
Yep. Thank you. So as we look at the operating budget, what was approved this last meeting on the 25th, as Paul said, we had some inflationary costs, as everyone has seen, some regulatory compliance, and then staffing needs. So our combined total operating budget for 2026, total revenues about $40.3 million, total expenses about $40.08 million. So our change in net positions around that $245,000. That's kind of supporting the system reliability. It incorporates January 1st rate adjustments that commission has previously approved and continues building some of those reserves to support these future capital projects, as we're seeing. Included in our expenses as we look into '26 are some open staffing positions, and those have been included in some of the organizational charts over time and remain unfilled. Many of these positions remain unfilled due to just the retirements and attrition we've been seeing, along with the ongoing review of our organizational needs. The evaluation aims to ensure that we're delivering those services effectively as we can, and as we look to these capital upgrades, making sure we're completing those as efficiently as we can. We're looking to really ensure that the trained personnel are available to offset the attrition we're seeing. The positions then included in this budget that are currently vacant are a technical services lead, a maintenance lead, two utility laborers, backfilling of the business office support specialist, which is in process already, two water service workers with backfilling the one retirement, and then one additional to provide that higher level of maintenance in the distribution system specifically, and then backfilling of one wastewater operator, which has already begun in process, too. But as I stated, those are already included, and then our personnel costs in this budget do reflect the Minnesota paid family leave, the medical leave, and then the increase in health insurance. As we look to like the electric funds specifically, revenues are stabilizing from year over year with the industrial load. We've seen rapid increases in revenues. Those have stabilized now over the years. Purchase power then is stabilizing, too. That's the biggest expense at that $20 million. Our wage and benefits increase reflect the backfills, as discussed earlier. There are some additional consulting needs that are included in this budget that were not in previous budgets. Cost of service work and then IT support, that's also included, and then some of those rate studies. The electric fund maintains that positive long-term forecast, but it also includes a 3% of revenues pilot that we've discussed at the council level before, per the request of council, the 3% in '26, 4% in '27, 5% in '28. Commission approved the 3% for '26, and that has been reflected and included in the budget. For your review at the next council meeting, you will have the adjusted or the policy change will be at the next council meeting for your review. Commission wants to hold off on the 4% and 5% until a full cost-of-service rate study could be performed. That full cost-of-service rate study is also included in then the '26 budget. As we look at the water fund, the water fund is showing a positive net position, a change in net position for the first time in several years. That's That's reflective of the twenty percent rate increase that happened last December. The operating pressures that are within the water budget are the chemical costs and the utility costs alone are increasing. But as we see the positive net position, we're showing that we can start building reserves. When we look at the wastewater, the wastewater fund, revenues remain steady and they're supported by the residential flows and then the Baxter contract. The O and M costs are continuing to rise with the aging infrastructure and then just the chemical costs alone are a big portion there. Staffing adjustments are reflected in the operating backfilling and then just the wastewater fund alone has maintained having a positive net position. This was the budget that was approved at the last commission meeting and Paul and I are here to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you, guys. Danny, one that came up, the cost of service rate study. I don't know if I can see it on the list here, but
Yeah.
Is that something that was already planned or is that something put in place recently? Or is it something we do every five years with BPU?
So we we typically do a rate study. We haven't done a full cost of service studies. The latest was in 2017. So with the request from council to consider that pilot adjustment, the commission wanted to do the full cost of service study to ensure we were capturing all of that.
Okay. And what is the cost of the study?
We have sixty thousand budgeted.
Okay. Just curious. Chezak?
Thank you. Power, purchase power is twenty million. That that number is an expense that you, the utility pays for power, correct? Is that what that is?
It's our purchase power from AEP as well as what we're producing at the the hydro plant. So that purchase power includes the offset from the hydro generation.
Okay. So the cost though is twenty million?
Yes.
Okay. So, okay. And so I just want to weigh in on the water. I know I mentioned this before, but there was a twenty percent increase in water and had that not been implemented, you'd be looking at about, what is it, eight eight hundred thousand shortfall because you're in the you're in the positive about two hundred, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And it would have, it made a difference of accumulating about eight hundred thousand. So is that correct?
About six hundred thousand.
Six hundred. Okay. So without that, you would see about a six hundred thousand deficit in water or well, actually eight hundred, right? Is that not correct based on their, based on being two hundred dollars in the positive?
It'd be closer to six hundred thousand in the negative BS.
Okay. All right. So I just wanted to mention that because utilities, they were, you know, one, you know, this this thing, water has been at a deficit for a long time, so they took responsibility and increased the rates to accommodate for that shortfall they've been having. And it was just a nice thing to see that they took care of it and now they have a surplus of funds there to help with their projects and all that. So thank you. That's all I have.
It's Jaeger.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Sandy, the 2040 carbon free initiative, is that a federal or a state initiative?
State.
We have any idea what that number is going to be?
As far as for how much capital expense?
Yep. Just a macro view.
I don't remember the last numbers that were coming through of our solar field at the airport and what we're at from a hydro generation. How much of our residential load is?
So presently with our residential load, we have about seventeen percent of our coverage for the 2040 initiative. So we have a long way to go. That does not include our commercial load.
It's a big number.
It's a big, big number.
Do we have any idea what the local versus the, you said it was state, correct? What the state coverage is going to be on that gap?
Currently, there is no state coverage. We have
All right, good to know. Thank you. That's all.
Just banking out a lot of sunshine. That's all. Anyone else? Mr. Johnson?
I have a question. On the 2040, I thought it was unclear when it passed if it if it applied to municipal utilities or just private sector utilities. Does the 2040 directive apply to municipal utilities? Yeah. That's unfortunate. And then the hydro offset used to be itemized, you know, off a hand, but the offset was from the electricity generated by the hydro dam. If you don't have it
And the budget is eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand?
Yep.
That's that's down. It was a bad year of flowage.
Yeah. Low river.
We're down.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Chezak?
I got a question regarding the hydro. Have we ever done an analysis where we looked at our ongoing costs and then, you know, including operations and then what we receive in electrical revenues to see where we're at on that?
I don't know if we've done a detailed analysis of something like that. You know, obviously our budget reflects, I think it's a loss in net position on the hydro side. Right now, you know, with a potential generator project, we just met with Senator Representative Heintzmann at the facility and they're carrying bills forward again for us this year to try to get money to do the pit six generator replacement. So we're working with our representation right now to try to fund that project to increase our hydro generation at that facility.
Is that something staff could do at at some point in time? Do you know if one's ever done in the past regarding the, it's always, I guess, troubled me that we've stuck a lot of money in that hydro dam since we got it. It's been a ton of money and I I question whether the revenues we've gotten from the power have come close to offsetting the, you know, return on investment is questionable.
Yeah, I think it's something we could take
From memory, Jeff, we had a positive net position for the first five years of owning the dam and in the last five years we have, we've been at a loss, but we can, I can
Okay.
Crunch some numbers.
Thank you very much.
All right. Anyone else have questions? Doesn't look like it. Thank you, gentlemen. Oh, Mr. Chezak?
I was just gonna make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Prove the public utility budget operating in capital.
Motion by Chezak, second by Bevins. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, moving on. Next we have number eight. This is council committee reports. First up, we have Safety and Publics Committee Chairman Tad Erickson.
All right, thank you, Council President. We had five items on our agenda, the first of which is direction regarding a request from Mr. Bolig, a complaint on stormwater easement adjacent to county stated Highway 48. There's no recommendation coming out of the committee for this item. We did have a motion that failed for lack of a second. The issue at hand is that council received testimony from Mr. Bolig, who resides on Anabek Street about his concern regarding stormwater entering the county's stormwater drainage easement in the back portion of his property. Staff's recommendation was that it's staff's opinion that the city connected appropriately to the stormwater sewer facility installed by the county, including a recent MOU agreement and that no action needed to be taken on the city. Again, there was a motion that was made to the effect that the city to direct staff to conduct a study, but again, that failed for lack of a second. So no action or no recommendation from the committee on this item.
Thank you.
The next item
President? Mr. Chezak?
Yeah. Are we gonna have any discussion?
That's up to you guys.
Okay. I'd like to have a discussion. No action. Yeah, I feel Mr. Bolig is one of these people that this is going back how many years ago, as everybody knows, like 2021, the Southwest Brainerd construction project was done. That's when Kerbin Gutter was put in. He had no issue with water at all, at all. No problem with water. You, we keep referring to this hold harmless agreement he's got with the county. It's like that. Again, it's, once you, once you do a project of this substantial amount back in 2021, if we put Kerbin Gutter in, it now creates a problem for Mr. Bolig and that's a city issue. It's seventy thirty, right? So again, we do things all the time. We had a water, we had a bank over there on the river slide and we had to fix that. That was how many thousands of dollars? We had a gully that was filled in that some, some people here at this dais would say that was no way we should have paid any money for that. The people moved in there. It was a natural contour of the land and so why are we spending money on this? That's their problem. Remember that? How many dollars have we put in that? Oh, we got a grant that covered a good portion of it from the state or the DNR, I believe. But at the same time, we took care of those people who lived over there because it was a very big problem. And I don't see a whole lot of difference between that and Mr. Bolig's problem and he's not the only one over there. Another thing Mr. Bolig is doing, he's paying a storm sewer fee. Do you know he has no storm sewer over there? And according to our finance director, the storm sewer collection is for people who get a service of storm sewer. So he's been paying since he moved in there back in the seventies. So has everyone else on that property. Have you ever heard of that before, getting charged for a storm sewer fee that you have no storm sewer? Another thing is we do these things all the time where we, and I'll refer to not, not to, not to say anything pejoratively about Mr. Johnson regarding a sanitary service line, sewer line we had here a couple of meetings back and, and the terminology would say we're just calling these people peasants, we're not helping them. And in some regards, I agree with him entirely. Only differences in that specific instance, we had a sanitary sewer line for years and years. The, the policy of the city was whenever that is replaced because somebody's connecting, they pay for the service line. We didn't, we would have gone against, we had set a precedent if we would have allowed that person to get reimbursed for that portion of the sanitary sewer, sewer line. So in all these instances, we look at one little document, a hold harmless, that was with the county. Now we have water that's causing this man and his neighbors problems and he needs representation. That's our job. That's our job. Staff isn't required to do that. They're, they're looking at money. Okay, it's expense, big expense. Are there alternatives? We don't know. We don't even know what kind of engineering services would come back if we did ask staff to go out to get an engineer to do some sort of study. The study is going to tell us what? He's got water going through there. We want to find out what caused it. Country manner. Staff said to this man in meetings, they aren't going to point the finger at anyone. No way, not going to do it. And I understand that, but country manner, everyone knows that the as built were not as built because they were not precise and that's what as built are. And staff was quick to point out that the as built weren't what they were supposed to be for country manners sewer and water, but we took care of that. Fifty thousand dollars, didn't bat an eye. So I just want to speak on behalf of Mr. Bolig and his neighbors because that's what we're here for. That's our job to represent the people in the city. And if it costs money to do so, that's our job. We have to make a decision. My colleagues heard, apparently didn't want to weigh in on that. So we look at a hold harmless agreement, thirty five, thirty five, forty years old, and that's what we're resting our laurels on. I, I, I think we have to start weighing everything equally. Country manner, I, I, I argued against that. I thought if those as builds would have been correct, if we gave them the specs before they would have gone out for bids, they would have incorporated that into their total costs without any problem whatsoever. But we felt it's necessary to give them money because they see an added expense that technically wouldn't have been an added expense had they had the right locations to begin with. So that's my pitch. I'm in favor of seeing that this man gets some relief and I made a motion to that effect, but of course there was no second. But I would encourage the council to consider that based on my argument on his behalf because that's what, again, what we're here for.
Thank you, Mr. Chezak. Anyone else want to chime in on this discussion? Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I will just say the project on Ninth Street replaced nearly ten feet of sanitary main, so I don't necessarily agree with how it was characterized there. And I agree with Councilman Chezak that we should, we should at least look into this. I know a hundred thousand dollars is six figures. It's not ninety thousand, it's a hundred. It's a lot of money, but that's just a staff estimate. I do think we should at least go so far to see what a study would cost and have staff get an actual quote bid proposal, whatever the correct term and process is for, for a project like this.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else?
I'll have a motion to that effect if, if you take it.
Yeah, I'll just make a comment. It's, it's hard for me to go through all of this documentation and just ignore the hold harmless agreement from nineteen seventy seven, was it?
There's two of them, actually.
Okay. No matter how old they are, there was a garage built with permission, given the condition that there's no, there's no, there's no cost to the county at that time. Now, we're, we're in an agreement with the county, holding on to that same exact drainage ditch or pond or whatever you want to call it. You can twist this and turn it and say everything has changed and maybe it has. Maybe we, maybe we need to do that study. Maybe that would be the best way to figure it out. But when I look at a cost such as that at a hundred and some thousand dollars, I would really prefer that the solution came to us from whoever's being held at harm rather than having us figure it out because we weren't the ones that built the garage. We had nothing to do with it other than permitting it. So it's hard for me to go in favor of, of going ahead and doing an engineering study on something like this until we have more of an idea of what we're getting ourselves into.
Mr. President, the garage is not an issue. He has a, never has been a problem with any kind of stormwater drainage for the garage. He brought in hundreds of yards of fill. He raised that up. It's got a perfect slope. It drops down significantly at the back compared to the rest of the contour of the land to go down into lower area. So that's never been an issue. The garage is fine. It's never been an issue. It's, it's in, it's, it was, it's there for if, if in case the water is a problem for the garage, but he did the right thing. He brought in, I think he raised it up six feet, he said. So that is not the issue. He's got all this stuff that collects, trees are going down and it only happened after the 2001 Southwest Construction, Street Construction Project. As a matter of fact, on February seventeenth of two thousand four, President Jim Dean, Council President, they, they voted, and I believe Mr. Bevins was there as well, to have staff, engineer, county engineer and city engineer get together with Mr. Bolig and come back with a resolution for this problem. That never happened. So again, there's staff direction being given that never got taken care of. I find that very interesting. So that was in February seventeenth of two thousand four. So this man's been dealing with this for, for two decades.
All right.
That's just troubling to me.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'd like to second Chairman Johnson, PNA Chair Johnson's motion to at least find out what a project would, would cost.
Okay. Is that, can you clarify the motion?
Yeah, so the motion would be to direct staff to get a bid, quote, proposal, whatever the correct lingo is, to get a stormwater engineering study performed and ISO move.
And I seconded that and I have a comment when you're ready.
Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Johnson, do you have something to say about
Yeah, I just want to speak to the motion that this isn't spending any money. It is spending a little bit of staff time to get the actual cost of what this would cost instead of just pulling a random big number out of the air and making it look scary.
Okay. Mr. Bevins?
Just that I, I wouldn't be surprised with our two engineers on staff now that we might be able to figure this out our in-house. I mean, what do I know?
That's like, I feel like draining water is a very simple thing, but it becomes so complicated. I wish it was less complicated. Anyone else? Discussion on that motion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Chezak?
I'd like to thank Mr. Bevins and Mr. Johnson for the second motion and the second to hopefully move forward on this.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Tony, please call the roll.
Jaeger?
No.
Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chezak?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes. That motion carries. Chairman Erickson?
All right, thank you very much. Our second item is approved design, construction, engineering proposal improvement 2505 Southeast Brainerd Reconstruction Project. Motion coming out of committee is to award the proposal from Bolton and Menck for design and construction engineering services for the Southeast Brainerd Reconstruction Project in the amount of four hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and eighty six dollars and ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Chezak. Erickson?
Yeah, so it attached, we have a proposal from Bolton and Menck to perform design and construction engineering services for the said 2026 Southeast Brainerd Reconstruction Project. BPU has recently awarded PFA funding. Both Directors Sandy and Locke referenced these in their presentation for the lead service line replacement. Several of these locations are located within Uh, several of these locations are located within the city's project, um, scope or, or area, and so staff put together a request that we, um, approve the proposal for Bolton and Menk as they are also the con- the consultant that's doing the, uh, lead service line. And in so doing, it would create, uh, efficiencies and, uh, cost savings.
All right. Thank you. Any more discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Chazak.
Um, just so everyone knows, this is not just the city's portion of the lead service line. This will also encompass residential properties from the curb stop to the home where they have the, uh, the, uh, lead or the, uh, galvanized lines. So that's important for people to know that.
Thank you. Mayor Bevins?
Yeah, I just want clarification. Galvanized is included in that as well? Lead and galvanized service lines, correct. Uh, a majority, a large majority, probably almost a hundred percent are galvanized in the city of Brainerd.
More discussion on that motion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Erickson.
All right, our third item, to approve amendment request, SRF Consulting, Trunk Highway two-ten slash Washington Reconstruction. Motion coming out of committee is to approve the requested contract amendment from SRF Consulting in the amount of sixty-five thousand, two hundred and ten, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Chazak. Erickson?
So staff received this, uh, amendment request from SRF Consulting, uh, they're performing the design and engineering uh, for the water main, sanitary sewer and lighting, uh, for the upcoming Trunk Highway two-ten Reconstruction Project. Um, they had additional hours, uh, that they found that were necessary to complete the additional analysis. Uh, that was outside the original intended scope of work. And, um, this dollar amount represents the cost for those additional dollar amounts. There was a, I'm going to call it a well, fifteen thousand dollar allowance that was built into the original. Um, so they did use that up first, and then the additional amount for those hours is the sixty-five thousand, two-ten.
All right. Thank you. More discussion?
Yeah, I might add too that, um, uh, the lighting portion is state aid eligible.
Okay. And we'll have discussion on that motion. Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Erickson.
Uh, our fourth item was simply an update on, uh, construction projects. Uh, no action was required. Um, there was no additions, uh, since the agenda went out. So, uh, this was just information only. Uh, information's in your packet, so no action required.
Mr. President?
Action required. There's, this is an item up for discussion though. If anyone has questions, comments, discussion? Mr. Chazak?
Yeah, I, I held off because I figured this is, should have been on the council agenda based on the motion coming from Mr. Bevins and, uh, to move forward with this. But, um, so, um, as you know, I've expressed a few concerns about this, uh, project and, um, we, we, um, I, I, I guess my, I, I think I understand how this happened and it, 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 it is what it is, okay? So I understand that. Um, we have, um, decisions being made, um, and, uh, and Mr. Dean's memo says the meetings were not designed to get council direction. So I, I appreciate that. I, I don't think that was the intention. However, there's numerous documents that show that, um, the Tenth Street portion of the, um, Wright Street project has been suspended until next spring, which our attorney did indicate that it needs, uh, council action. So I'm, I'm just going to ask this. Is that going to come before us yet, before the spring? Is that, is that going to be an item we will see in front of us yet? Sometime here, perhaps in the near future. I'd ask that of staff, maybe Nick or...
Jesse, do you have an answer for that?
I, I can advise, uh, it depends on what the council's looking for. We don't need to make a contract change unless the council directs us to make a change. As of right now, the only change, uh, that has been made is to the contract deadline, uh, which the original end date was October third, and change order two reflected an additional fifteen working days. So as of right now, the contract language dictates that after that point, liquidated damages do apply on the contract. So depending on when they finish the contract and the, uh, work on the project, um, those liquidated damages apply accordingly. So I guess I'm looking for direction from the council. If you were looking for a change to that contract language, we would also have to run that by the contractor.
I think it would be smart to bring that back to the council at some point. I, I don't think it would be smart to open up that project right now after last week's storm. I think we can leave Tenth Street untouched. And I don't think that's what you're suggesting. I'm just joking. It wasn't very funny. But, uh,
Mr. President?
With that, I think, I think we should, there were things discussed at that meeting that really weren't much of an option. Uh, it was more communication with council being present. So I think bringing that forward with whatever the council needs to approve would be smart to do as soon as possible.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Chazak.
I, I'm just going to repeat myself. I, sorry, I have a, on October sixth, uh, City Attorney Langle indicated that when you change the time of a contract, which we did, it's, Tenth Street was not originally scheduled to be completed in the spring of twenty-twenty-six. So we changed the time. Um, not by this council though. He said the council needs to vote on that if you change that. What, am I correct there, Mr. Langle?
It hasn't been changed though.
Oh, every, every document I read says, um, I got a report here from our administrator that says that project had been suspended until twenty-twenty-six. That was on the seventeenth of November. Um, I see October sixth. It says that we're holding off on Tenth Street until spring of twenty-twenty-six. Um, has there been direction given to the contractor to hold off on Tenth Street until twenty-twenty-six?
I, I can advise on that. Uh, yes. Uh, the project was phased specifically to Wright and Tenth Street. Um, based on their process and their schedule, uh, they essentially finished Wright Street at the end of the construction season, the constructible season. Um, for them to begin Tenth Street, it would have been at the end of October. Uh, we knew it was infeasible for them to not only open it up, but also finish it, uh, within a reasonable timeframe, um, during the constructible season.
So
So staff's direction to the contractor was not to open up Tenth Street earlier, um, than Wright Street was completed, which in effect moved Tenth Street to the twenty-twenty-six season.
Right. Okay. So yes, there has been a decision made to Mr. Johnson's point, I guess, too. Um, one other question I have is on the Ronald Joseph Street. Did the council ever take action to extend that till twenty-twenty-six? Anyone?
Mr. Dean?
The original contract had, uh, an allowance of that project to extend it to June twenty-twenty-six because we knew, uh, Joseph and Ronald had potential impacts with the detour route for the roundabout. So it was specifically crafted to have some flexibility with the deadline of that project, but the allowance to be able to get Hawkins done within twenty, twenty-twenty-five, which it did.
Okay. I wasn't aware of that, but thank you. That, that helps me. So a- at this point, Mr. O'Day, um, I would just, um, I, I, my whole problem here I have with this is the process, and I have expressed it a number of times. I don't, won't go through it again. But I, I, I would like to know, um, what, what do we see moving forward, you know? Um, if, if, if this, if, if we, um, maybe I could ask a legal question to Mr. Langle. If, if we're going to talk about liquidating damages, canceling a contract, is that potential litigation?
Well, anytime that you talk about damages in a contract, there's potential litigation depending upon whether the contractor's agreeing with it. I mean, that's, that's always the case.
So we, we would be, have the right to go into closed session for potential litigation to discuss this if we chose to.
If there's some indication that, that that could occur, yes, if you, I mean, we could make an argument that that's a potential, uh, coming out of, uh, a contract, um, dispute, violation, what have you.
I think you just said anytime we have, um, talking about this liquidating damages and canceling contracts is potential litigation. Okay, so could we receive an email? Um, that would be confidential from our city attorney in regards to what's going on here? Is that something we could do?
I could discuss the underlying facts with staff and we could, uh, come up with a confidential communication to council. Yeah, that's certainly allowed.
Okay. Um, I, I, Mr. President? If I could, um, I would like to move that we receive an update from our city attorney and, and staff to inform us of the, um, issues surrounding the potential of us exploring liquidated damages or canceling a contract and all, or all of the above regarding this issue. And to see exactly what the recommendation is from staff on going forward with the, uh, suspension of the Tenth Speed, portion of Wright Street project until the spring. I so move.
We have a motion by Chazak. For a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second by Bevins. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Erickson, you have something?
Yeah, Mr. Chazak, could you just clarify? In, in the motion, you said all of the above. Can you just further define that?
Well, that's, any of the, yeah, any of the, uh, items that are faced before us here are outlined in Mr. Dean's memo. Um, uh, most recent memo regarding liquidating damages, canceling a contract, the items he had listed there. That's what I was referencing.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
More discussion on that motion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Against, same sign. That motion carries. Chairman Erickson. All right, thank, oh, oh, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. We can, we can keep the discussion going if you want.
Well, I just have one question. I need clarification here because I'm under the understanding that the contract was not amended and that liquidated damages are on the table. Just because staff said, don't dig up this street, you're not going to get it done, doesn't, that doesn't constitute a change in the contract where liquidated damages don't apply, does it?
It does not.
Right. So liquidated damages on Tenth Street still apply because we have not amended the contract, correct? That's what I thought. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Moving on, Chairman Erickson.
All right, this is our, our last item. And, uh, to consider enacting an ordinance regulating massage therapy businesses. Motion coming out of committee is to direct staff, uh, to draft a proposed ordinance to regulate licensing and business practices for massage therapy, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Chazak. Erickson?
So in our committee, Chief Davis presented this item, and I'm just going to read the summary here. It's to address rising criminal activity and concerning conduct at local massage therapy businesses. Staff seeks council direction on implementing a local regulatory ordinance. Unlike most states, Minnesota does not license massage therapy at the state level, prompting many cities to adopt their own licensure requirements to ensure public safety. And that's the, the onus for, uh, this request.
Okay. Anyone else have discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Erickson.
Uh, thank you. End of, end of report.
Thank you, Chairman Erickson. Moving on, this is eight B Personnel and Finance Committee Chairman Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've got four items, the first of which is approval of an updated animal control contract. And the motion out of committee was to approve the three-year animal control agreement with Lakes Area Animal Control and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Chairman Johnson?
Uh, the police department and, and our committee as well are, have been satisfied with the services provided by Lakes Area Animal Control. The part that really affects the budget or the finances, his compensation is only, is going up less than a hundred dollars per month in each year of the contract and less than a hundred dollars a month from this year, next year too. So it, it's a reasonable financial change for the, for the quality service they provide.
All right. Thank you. More discussion. Mr. Chazak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I don't know who can answer this, but if the animal control individual is not, um, responsive and somebody uh, has issue, who do they contact?
Anyone from staff want to answer that? Chief?
Yeah, generally, most of those calls are fielded through our Crow Wing County Dispatch Center. And if, for whatever reason, animal control's not available, that gets passed directly on to the police department to take responsibility for it, and that usually is, uh, either an officer or at times, uh, community service officer addressing, uh, what the request is, what the need is.
So if, uh, you say somebody is unhappy with the service they could contact, that, that's, that's how they would contact to the, uh...
I, I'm, I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood. If they're unhappy with the animal control service or they're requesting animal control service?
They're, the, the animal control is less than responsive or they're not performing as maybe the, or individual might think they should.
Sure.
Who, who then oversees that person?
Um, it'd be, my belief would be City Administrator Broyles.
Okay.
Uh, on behalf of the city, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Johnson, do you have something?
Yeah, I would just like to add to that answer. We have a public forum every two weeks. I think they should come and let the council know so we can take action if, if the job isn't being performed properly.
Okay. Thank you. More discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you. Next up is the misdemeanor prosecution services agreement. And the motion is to approve the agreement with Severson Porter Law for misdemeanor prosecution services for calendar years twenty-six and twenty-seven, contingent on approval of a joint powers agreement with the cities of Baxter and Nisswa for their like services. And to direct staff to explore case management software options with Severson Porter to aid in these functions and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Chairman Johnson?
So they are proposing a three percent annual increase cap and a one percent floor, so it's a reasonable annual increase for services that the police department and I think the city as a whole are satisfied with. We don't have agreements with Baxter and Nisswa yet, but we don't have any reason to believe we won't. So this is contingent upon that agreement being put in place, and that should be before us soon.
Thank you. Mr. Bevins?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair. And the committee did ask of staff to report back on revenues from the state on this prosecution.
Okay. Is that part of the motion or just?
No, it's just an FYI.
Thank you.
Just part of the minutes.
Thank you. Anyone else?
President O'Day?
Mr. Chazak?
Yeah, I emailed, uh, Nick a question about case management software. Uh, Nick, would you be willing to just explain that again? So I, I'm, I'm just real not, not very clear on how that explorer, explore that case management software, I think is what's in the...
Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, to start this, and, and Chief Davis can help fill me in if I, uh, miss something, but Chief Davis and I had a meeting with Kurt Porter and Mark Severson, and we were talking about the contract. And just due to the nature of, of, uh, particularly criminal, criminal litigation, the volume is increasing considerably year over year. Um, there's a lot of interaction between the, our, our misdemeanor prosecution office and officers, uh, et cetera, during discovery, things like that. So the one thing that Severson Porter did ask that we have in the contract is that they want us to have a discussion going forward about some case management software to better manage us. They're still managing their files essentially in banker boxes in their basement. Um, and I think it's worth having that conversation. Councilman Chazak asked me a question, I believe it was earlier today, about the cost for that case management software. And it would, and I talked to Chief Davis, and it would be our intention that as we continue to maybe en- engage in those conversations about a case management software, that those costs that are associated with that would be shared with Baxter and Nisswa. Obviously, they would have to agree to that. Um, but this is just taking the next step technologically where we can find a software suite where we can store all this data and would just help in all the interaction between the federal, the, the various law enforcement agencies and attorney teams.
Thank you very much.
All right. More discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. That motion carries. Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. The third item on our agenda is discussion of the twenty-twenty-six non-working funds budgets. Uh, they are all attached. We don't have final budgets from the EDA, which should be set this Thursday, or the library, which would be set, I think in January, but it is what it is. So just a discussion item. We'll adopt all of these budgets when we adopt the total budget package as a whole at the, in twenty-twenty-five.
Okay. So no motion?
No motion. Just if anybody has any questions or discussion, can I?
Any questions or discussion on that item? See none?
Okay, then we'll go to the next item, and that's discussion of the twenty-twenty-six operating budget and levy. It's a lot of information here in the packet that you read. The motion that came out of committee was to reinstate the seven hundred eighty-four thousand dollars for the Public Works Garage in the capital plan in year twenty-twenty-eight and present a twenty-twenty-six levy of seven million, four hundred thirty-five thousand, three hundred twenty-three dollars, a four-point-seven-five percent increase at the public hearing next week. And I so move.
Second.
See a four-point-seven-four?
I think we could do that, yeah.
Okay. All right. We have a motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Any discussion? Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, so Mike, as you know, and you could, you could expound upon it, but when we met with, with the City Administrator and Finance Director, the Finance Director had already gotten some more information in of lower insurance costs and some good news for us that got the proposed levy down to a potential 4.75% this year. But we also took a look at the capital budget, and we saw for 2026, they had $784,000 in the Public Works Garage. And the council president and myself agreed to remove that because we're going through this possible reorganization, and we're not sure what Public Works is going to look like in one year, two year, five years. So we pulled it out of '26, but this motion is putting it back in in '28 because if and when there is a reorganization, there will probably be a construction need out at that garage. We decided not to do next year's project right now just to bundle it with whatever changes need to be made in the future when we identify what those are. Right now, we don't know. So let's put that off for now, and set the levy at a 4.75 increase.
Expanding on that, that was a project that was coming forward from a study that was based on the way that the city is organized right now. So looking into what the charter is doing, what the Charter Commission is possibly doing, what we might do is reorganize the city, that study might not pertain to what we have in another year or two years. So.
Johnson?
That's all I have.
Okay. Any more discussion?
President?
Mr. Chesak?
So if that had stayed in the budget for 2026, the Public Works Garage, $700,000 and change, what would that do to our levy? That's looking at?
Wouldn't change.
Huh?
It wouldn't change.
Explain that. I, that's the part I'm not getting.
Mr. Johnson?
So it wouldn't change the 2026 levy because it's a capital expenditure. We have our capital levy each year of $1.1 million. Some years, we spend $3 million, some years, we spend $500,000. So over the course of the long term, that seven, not spending that $784,000 would eventually benefit the levy, but it's not immediate every year, just to kind of keep our levy as stable as we possibly can.
Another reason why I like Mr. Johnson as our Finance Committee Chairman. Thank you very much.
Does a great job. All right. Any other discussion, questions? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Against, same sign. That motion carries. Chairman Johnson?
End of report.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Moving on to number nine, this is unfinished business. First up, 9A, we have a call for applicants, and we have your honorable Mayor Bedeau.
The honorable, indeed. I have a note on here that says this includes the vacancies expiring on 12/31. I appreciate that because it's good to get a head start on this. So the following boards and commissions have positions available. Charter Commission, two terms expiring 2025, two terms expiring 2026. Economic Development Authority, one term expiring 2028. Housing Redevelopment Authority, two terms expiring 2030. Library Board, holy Hannah, get ready for this, five terms expiring, all at the same time, 2031. And the Park Board, one term expiring 2028, and one term expiring 2029, as well as Public Utilities Commission, one term expiring 2028 and one term expiring 2030. And, hold on to your seats, folks, Transportation Advisory Committee, one term expiring 2026 and two terms expiring 2027.
All right. And as council president, I have two terms for the Planning Commission expiring 2028, and then two terms for the Water Tower Committee, still open. Moving on to 9B, this is a final reading of proposed ordinance 1598 for snow removal. Presenter listed here is Mike Habegars, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. The existing downtown snow removal ordinance is specific for a contractor to complete the snow removal. The attached downtown snow removal ordinance has been reviewed by staff and approved by the city attorney. The proposed ordinance is flexible to allow the city council to award downtown snow removal to a private contractor and/or to be completed by city staff. The city council conducted the first reading on the proposed ordinance 1598 on November 17th. Staff is recommending to conduct the full reading of the proposed ordinance 1598 and suspend the actual reading. And number two, approve the ordinance 1598.
Thank you. Anybody have questions for staff? There are no questions for staff. We're looking for a motion.
So move.
To approve.
Second.
Approve and dispense with the actual reading. Looks like we have a motion from Chesak, second by Bevins. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Against, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we're looking for a motion to approve ordinance 1598.
So move. Second.
Motion by Chesak, second by Bevins. Any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Tony, please call the roll.
Jaeger? Yes. Erickson? Yes. Bevins? Yes. Chesak? Yes. Johnson? Nope. O'Day?
Yes. That ordinance is adopted. Moving on to 9C, we have approval of a adopted solar development agreement at Rotary Park. Again, we have Public Works Director, Mike Habegars.
Thank you, Mr. President. The solar development agreement for Rotary Park has been previously approved by BPU Commission, Park Board, and City Council. However, the Rotary Club is requesting Article 11.2 and 11.3 to be removed, which really addresses that after the warranty has expired, the Rotary Club would be responsible for the ongoing maintenance and decommissioning of the solar panels. This verbiage has been removed now and will be the responsibility of BPU, as with all solar items in the city. Other charges or other changes are minor and include the BPU will provide a down payment by December 31st, and which will maintain that federal tax credit. And also, the completion date was adjusted to June 30th, 2026. And lastly, Michelle Francis was added as the signature for the Rotary Club. Attached to this agenda item are the red line and the clean versions of this agreement. The BPU Commission has approved the updated agreement, and also, the Park Board has also approved this, this new amendment. Staff is recommending approval of the updated solar development agreement at Rotary Park, and with that, we can take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Habegars. Does anybody have questions for staff? Doesn't look like it.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Chesak?
I have concerns, and I'd like to discuss those if I could.
Yeah, go for it.
I, the Utility Commission got this wrong. And the reason why, we all able to see the email I got from Public Utilities Director Sandy today?
I did.
Okay.
Not sure if everybody did.
It's, it's in your inbox. Just to go through it really briefly, there's already been about 11,000 of costs with wages or employee hours and materials to extend power to this facility. So they have power. That was their, that was their thing. They would like to have power. And what happens here with this solar panel is now with this change, of course, on November 3rd, I voted for this because at that time, the Rotarians were going to be responsible for future decommission, any kind of maintenance and repairs. And this is in a location where the threat of vandalism is extremely high, and this is going to be all burdened on the ratepayers, the ratepayers that we represent. Additionally, if I could, $34,000 total contribution by the Public Utilities. And, and that's paid by the people that we represent, the ratepayers. It's irresponsible when we're, we're looking at what this is, it's literally an ideological-driven facility. It's great. It won't, it won't even click the meter on what, on what we can see regarding energy in the big picture. It's like, it really doesn't add anything to our portfolio of carbon free because it's so small. The amount of return on this is, it takes...
32 years.
32, thank you, to get, I mean, by then, it's, it's kaput. And I just think if we're going to do our job correctly and represent the people who are going to wind up paying for this, we shouldn't pass it. That's, that's where I'm at. So initially, Public Utility staff did not recommend this. So I would say this, that I did talk to one commission member who told me he made a mistake when he voted for this last Tuesday. So I, I would move that we do not approve this agreement.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Motion by Chesak?
Second.
Second by Jaeger. Any discussion on that motion? Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I'll support the motion. I agree with everything Councilman Chesak stated. I, you know, I would just add, I was going to go along with it because so many people and organizations are involved, and they all support it, and it's not that big of a deal, so I was going to go along with it. But I'll support this motion because I don't really like the idea of what's happening at Rotary Park. It was, it was, the city accepted all of this natural habitat to be the city's one natural park. And now we're getting gazebos, parking lots, I don't know if we have bathrooms yet, but they'll, they'll be there, all on the backs of the taxpayers or now ratepayers for this solar project, I think the council correctly pointed out, is nothing more than a vanity project. And when you're doing small-scale installations on your house, you're not really saving the environment, you're just letting your neighbors know that you're a good person. So it is kind of pointless to do this. But since the motion was made, I will support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Bevins?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. As usual, this drives me crazy, making motions to not do stuff because I don't think we need to, we just don't do it. But I'll, I'll support the motion as well, as crazy as it is.
We already do have an agreement in place. It's just, we, we as a city and the public utility don't have as much liability with the current agreement that's in place. For whatever reason it may be, this, this agreement went through, what, three different commissions, including council? And then Rotary decided that they didn't like it. I don't think I can think of a time that I've been around here that we've just gone back on agreement that's already gone through all the commissions. So just as a principle, I don't believe in changing this after we've already agreed on it and already gone through the motions of everything. So I support the motion as well. Mr. Mayor?
Clarification here. So this is, is the motion to rescind the, the agreement that they're no longer looking to sign because you've, we've approved an agreement, but they're not interested in that agreement now?
No.
So is the motion to?
The motion that is, this, this agreement in front of us, I'm rejecting it by the motion.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. So we have the motion by Chesak, second was by?
Jaeger.
Jaeger. Okay. Everybody clear on the motion? Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Against, same sign. That motion carries. All right. That is it for unfinished business. Moving on to number 10, this is new business. 10A is a consideration of an interim use permit renewal for the short-term rental at 1005 South Sixth Street. And this is Community Development Director, James Kramvik.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So Rick Bedeau has applied for the renewal of an interim use permit to operate two short-term rentals at 1005 South Sixth Street. The four-plex is currently permitted to operate two short-term rentals along with two long-term rentals. An approval of the request would allow the applicant to change which units are short-term rentals without council approval. However, no more than two units can be short-term rentals at any one time. Staff have not received any complaints against the property while operating as a short-term rental. With that, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the IUP renewal as presented with the following conditions. The interim use permit for two short-term rentals at 1005 South Sixth Street shall terminate on 12/31/2027. Upon sale or transfer of the property, the IUP for the short-term rental at 1005 South Sixth Street are no longer valid. Submit a, the City of Brainerd Lodging Tax Form by the 10th of each and every month, regardless of rental activity. And units cannot exceed occupancy limits of the Property Maintenance Code, and no more than two units may be rented at any one time. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kramvik. Anybody have questions for Mr. Kramvik or staff? Looks like none. If not, we're looking for a motion.
So move. Second.
Motion by Bevins, second by Johnson to follow the recommendations. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Against, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to 10B, consideration of interim use permit for a short-term rental at 712 North Sixth Street. Again, Community Development Director, James Kramvik.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rick Bedeau has submitted a request for an interim use permit to operate a short-term rental at 712 North Sixth Street. This property is currently operating as a short-term rental, and his mother resides at the property. Short-term rentals operating prior to June 18th of 2024 shall be compliant with Section 515-37, short-term rentals by December 31st of 2025. Staff have not received a complaint against this property while operating as a short-term rental. With that, Planning Commission recommended approval of the interim use permit for a short-term rental with the following conditions. Interim use permit for a short-term rental at 712 Sixth Street North shall terminate on 12/31/2027. Upon sale or transfer of the property, interim use permit for the short-term rental is no longer valid. Submit a, the City of Brainerd Lodging Tax Form by the 10th of each and every month, regardless of rental activity. And the maximum occupancy must be reduced to three. Staff recommends a slight change to this one, changing the condition to units cannot exceed occupancy limits of the Property Maintenance Code. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kramvik. Does anybody have questions? Seeing none. Can you restate that on number four for your recommendation?
So the recommendation would be the maximum occupancy cannot exceed occupancy limits of the Property Maintenance Code.
Okay. All right. Everybody clear on that? If we don't have any questions, we're looking for a motion.
So move. Second.
Motion by Bevins, second by Johnson to go with those recommendations. Are you going with the recommendations on the memo or those from Mr. Kramvik? Just the one that, number four, cannot exceed the code for maximum occupancy instead of just three?
I thought he was going with the recommended act.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That is the motion. Any discussion on that motion? Mr. Erickson?
Yeah. Could, could I ask a question of James as to the difference between what's on, the maximum occupancy must be reduced to three and then how you stated it? What's the?
It would still be three, you know, kind of irregardless. It's a little bit cleaner to just reference the Property Maintenance Code in the event that changes or, it's just a, I think, a better way to do it.
Okay. Either way, if it passes this way, it doesn't seem like a big deal.
I don't think it'll be too big of a change.
But in two years, when this comes up again, we'll change it. So, all right. Any other discussion? Seeing none? Let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. That motion carries. Next, we have 10C. This is a consideration of interim use permit for a short-term rental at 9995 Island Drive. Again, James Krambek.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kurt Waters has submitted a request for an interim use permit to operate a short-term rental at 9995 Island Drive. Uh, this property is currently operating as a short-term rental. Short-term rentals operating prior to June 18th of 2024 shall be compliant with Section 515-37 Short-Term Rentals by December 31st of 2025. Staff have not received any complaints against this property while operating as a short-term rental. Uh, Planning Commission recommended approval of the IUP for a short-term rental with the following conditions. The IUP for the short-term rental at 9995 shall terminate on 12/31 of 2027. Upon sale or transfer of the property, the IUP for the short-term rental is no longer valid. And then summital of the City of Brainerd Lodging Tax Form by the 10th of each and every month regardless of rental activity. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you, James. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I just have a question. I notice we have three of these short terms on tonight, and I, I believe we have a number more that expire at the end of this month. Do you know how many are outstanding, did not?
So, these are the only ones that, um, expired at the end of the month here essentially. So, whenever they have applied or been approved for that short-term rental, it's a one-year. It's not an end-of-the-year type thing.
Okay, so it's one year from the date. So, these are the only three expiring on December 31st?
They are.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have questions? Seeing none? Looking for a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Bevins, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Seeing none? Let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to 10D. This is a first reading of Proposed Ordinance 1599, having to do with the fee schedule. Again, this is Community Development Director James Krambek.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, City Council should review the fee schedule annually and determine if any fees should be adjusted or added. Staff have provided a recommendation of additional fees and adjustments for City Council to consider. City Council should review the fee schedule and make any adjustments prior to conducting the first reading if necessary. Additional fees include shoreline alterations permit, which will be beneficial for the new, um, shoreline ordinance that, uh, the Planning Commission will be proposing. PUD amendment, EAW, as well as an EIS review, and annexation petition. Adjusted fees include zoning text amendment, club on sale on Sunday liquor, on sale liquor Sunday, impound fees, and assessment search. In addition, staff also added a provision for collecting escrows. Uh, so with that, staff recommends to conduct the first reading of Proposed Ordinance 1599 and dispense with the actual reading. Note, a vote to dispense with the actual reading must be unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Krambek. Does anyone have questions?
Mr. President.
Chesak?
We, uh, didn't we go over fees last year and, um, increase a number of them last year as well, Mr. Krambek?
The last two years, there was a, a number more of fee increases compared to this year.
More than, okay, thank you. I, it's hard to remember everything. Thank you. That's all I got.
Chesak?
That's all I got.
Anyone else?
Move to conduct the first reading of 1599.
Second.
And dispense with the actual reading?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, good. Motion by Bevins, second by Johnson. Any discussion on that? Seeing none? Let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. All right, moving on to 10E. This is a consideration of a CUP for future use land map amendment in Proposed Ordinance 1600. Rezoning from CN2 to GC to allow for an animal clinic on parcel 41290683, northeast corner of Oak Street and 28th Street East. Uh, I believe, again, this is Community Development Director Krambek. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so, the applicant has applied for these requests to construct and operate a new Brainerd Animal Hospital's facility, again, at the corner of 28th Street and Oak Street. Uh, the Planning Commission considered this request and recommended denial as they believe this property would be better zoned as traditional neighborhood two district. There are other TN2 in this area. Um, they believe that this would be a spot zone. Uh, the adjacent properties are zoned CN2. Uh, opening up additional commercial, commercial uses could be detrimental to the surrounding properties. Uh, the TN2 district has a minimum, has a 20-foot maximum building setback, which would be an issue for the applicant, um, and the current design layout. That was stated by the applicant at the meeting. Uh, staff noted that commercial and residential development in this area have large setbacks. So, the TN2 district setback requirement would be inconsistent with the surrounding uses. Uh, staff did include a, a larger summary of comments, um, included in the packet. Uh, staff have included, uh, the recommended motions for denial based on, uh, the Planning Commission recommendation. Uh, if that is the, the council's direction, uh, reasons should be given by City Council for a denial. If City Council chooses to approve their requests, a first reading must be conducted for Proposed Ordinance 1600. Uh, staff has included the recommended process for approval under the, um, denial process. Uh, and just to note, uh, two-thirds council approval would be needed to rezone from residential to commercial. And, uh, staff is also recommending that all actions must be approved or denied separately. With that, I can answer any questions. The applicant is also here.
Thank you, Mr. Krambek. Does anybody have questions? Mr. Chesak?
Uh, yeah, and the two-thirds, is that of the six members here or is that of seven?
That'd be of the six members here.
Okay. And, uh, regarding the denial, and, uh, we have to state a reason you indicate here. Is that for each one of these items, we have to state our denial or just, uh, any one or, or all of them? How, how do we do that?
Reason should be given for, um, each denial. So, for instance, if, uh, the Planning Commission's, um, main reason was for the rezoning, um, certainly a lot of, um, reasons were provided, um, in, in that agenda request that, uh, staff presented there. The reasons for denial for the CUP, um, was simply that they, um, recommended denial of the rezoning request. Um, but any other reasons could be given by council as well.
Does that answer your question?
Yes. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Anybody else have questions? Doesn't look like there are more questions. Um, I guess we'll just have a discussion. I will say, I've been looking at this. I, I understand where the Planning Commission is coming from. If, if, Max, could you pull up the zoning map? And get into that area if you could? Uh, it's on the city website. You, you can take a minute and find that map. But when you look at what this is, it's, it's a, a cor- a corner lot or two corner lots that have been essentially vacant my whole life. Um, it's on a busy corridor. It is zoned residential. There are a couple residential areas or plats right next to it. But I'm asking him to pull up the, the zoning map specifically because if you look at one property over past the next-door neighbor, all the rest of those properties along Oak Street on the north side are owned by, uh, the owner is called the Liberty Group, which owns the entire general commercial area just to the east of this, which is a pretty significant chunk of land. It's all general commercial. It's a junction of highways 25 and 18. Lot of traffic. And our corridor entering from there to downtown is Oak Street. And I think we should be promoting business. I think what our zoning map is doing right now is hindering development. I understand why they decided to put this as CN2 because there are a couple properties that fit that, and they would have been non-conforming if you had gone some other route. But if, if you think of what makes sense, you put businesses, you put businesses on the busiest streets. Oak Street could be one of those streets. I think it already is. If you look across the street where the animal hospital already is, they do have parking on the front of the building. Same with Clark Lake Homes right next door. It's not non-conforming to the area to see this type of development. It's just, it's just a zoning issue of what's allowed. So, I, I lean the other way from what is recommended here and looking at, going further at, at Oak Street and maybe looking at, did we get this wrong, you know, four years ago or three years ago, right, whatever this was? Because this is the exact type of thing that I don't want to get in the way of. So, I'm leaning away from the recommendation from Planning Commission and allowing this. If anyone else wants to chime in, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I, I, I'm fully in favor of, uh, allowing this and moving forward with the, the zoning change. I mean, moving into TN2 would also be a spot zoning. If you want to get into zoning language, which I don't. If you look across the street from this property, there's a little bit of woods, but right next to it is the Oak Street Christian School, which has a huge setback in a parking lot. Council President already pointed out Clark Lake Homes and Brainerd Animal Hospital. Probably a lob wedge away, both have parking lots out front. I mean, it fits the character of what's already developed there. And they're willing to stay in that neighborhood, invest in that neighborhood, and build a brand-new facility for all of our, all of our cats and dogs. I, I think it's, I think it's a win-win-win. So, I, I would fully support moving forward with the rezoning to general commercial.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Erickson?
Yeah, I absolutely agree with moving forward with, uh, allowing this, uh, on Oak Street, especially given that corridor. I mean, it, especially towards that eastern end, it's, it's really acts as a commercial corridor. Um, I do have a, Mr. President, if you'll allow me, I have a question of Director Krambek.
Yeah.
Um, directly west of this proposed site is Carefree Living. Is, while that could be argued, is a residential use, is that, wh- what is that currently zoned? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I mean, that's.
So, the senior living facility would be more of a commercial use but is allowed in the CN2 district?
Sure.
Could you repeat that, please?
Yeah, so like the senior living facilities would be more of a commercial use, um, allowed in a residential district.
Thank you.
And then, if I may, um, just wanted to clarify, um, with the city attorney here.
Yeah, just for clarification, it's under the statute, it's two-thirds majority of all members of the governing body, not a two-thirds of the quorum. So, it's five votes are needed.
We, we have approval from five council members to pass this, uh, change the zoning?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Anyone else? Mr. Jaeger?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mr. Chair. Um, I will, uh, be going a little bit against the grain with, uh, some of the members that have spoke on this. I believe that one of the reasons why we are struggling with this is because we have a history of spot zoning on this very road, and this is how spot zoning pays you back over time. Uh, we now, if we, uh, and we all did it probably, drove down Oak Street and looked down the two sides, and we saw four or five houses, and then we saw an auto shop, and then we saw a school, and then we, and so, uh, my concern is, is that this is just another example of spot zoning. I've spoken against spot zoning in the past. Um, and I believe this is just a, another example of why we shouldn't do it. Now, in this particular case, I 100% agree that there is a lot of ambiguity and there's a lot of nuance on this particular road. I'm pro-business also. That's easy to say when you don't have a house directly next to a property that is going to be turned into, for now, an animal hospital, but for general commercial, probably forever. So, that use may be there forever, it may not. And that really, to me, is the real risk and the peril in the shiny object, um, chasing shiny objects, chasing the, the project that happens to be in front of us now that we like. Over time, it begins to just continually erode and eat away at our most valuable, uh, places in Brainerd, which I believe are neighborhoods. So, uh, I believe that the, uh, Planning Commission got this one right. Um, so, I will be not in support of the rezoning. And I'd just also like to mention that we have many, many locations in this city right now where the applicant could walk into James's office, slide those plans across the desk, and walk out with a permit. No CUP, no IUP, no variances. We have commercial properties for this exact type use. This use could actually also fit on this property with just some slight changes to the plans. So, I believe that it's just a big swing to take this all the way to a general commercial, uh, directly adjacent to, um, uh, uh, neighborhood zoning. So, I'll be, uh, in, uh, not in, uh, favor of changing the zoning here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Anyone else have discussion points they want to bring up? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, it's typically Kevin and I see eye to eye on this stuff. On this one, I, I, I think we got it wrong. Um, in looking at this, I'm surprised that this, this building would not fit into what this is zoned as. Not saying that the zoning is wrong, or that, that it should be able to fit into that, just saying that it surprises me that, given the other structures that are around here, that we zoned it in a way that would not allow for that. Um, you know, I, I'm going up and down this street right now and just looking at it. And there are a, a couple of homes, but everything is setback. Everything along this road is, is very far removed from the road itself. So, the idea that moving essentially Kitty Corner to where they're currently located now is, is a use that isn't allowed, to me means we got it wrong. I mean, I, I'm looking at their current building. They're looking to build something very similar. I mean, we're not talking a mile away. We're talking across the street, Kitty Corner essentially. And everything around it is built up to be built in this certain way. I do agree, as we get further into this street and get further down, you do see a, a change to where it is, mostly homes, a little bit of intermittent businesses. But it, that type of zoning, I, I'm okay with it. I, I don't think it should be general commercial down further up this street. But from Beach Street on, towards Highway 18, Highway 25, I, I mean, this is a corridor coming into the city that should be lively and is ready for development. And I know there are a few homes within there, but all the homes that are in there are, are way off the street. And I, would they even fit into the zoning the way that they are?
I believe the CN2 district does not have a maximum setback like the TN2 district or TN1 district have.
Sure, sure. Yeah, it's just, it seems very odd to me. I, I, I think we should have done a little bit better job. And that's the problem that we run into when we have these large rezoning, um, you know, ideas that we had. We basically rezoned the entire city, went through bit by bit. And I, uh, from my own perspective on this one, I think we got it wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else? Mr. Erickson?
I already said my piece, but I'm, I'm glad the mayor referenced the, the two highways there. I mean, this is, I don't have a measurement, but this is in close proximity. There's no other, uh, local roads between it and the junction of two state highways. So, I, I don't, I think we'd be remiss to not consider allowing a commercial use at the junction of two state highway, or near the junction of two state highways and at the corner of two of our, um, I would say Collector or, or Gateway Road, local roads.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. So, most of us have kind of made our comments on this one. We have two different directions, um, to go.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Chesak?
Um, I think I'm gonna take a crack at this.
Okay.
I'm gonna recommend we, uh, rezone the parcel 412968, I believe it is.
90683.
Thank you. To GC, General Commercial. I assume.
We have that motion in place, but the, the proper, uh, the, the proper route would be to first conduct the first reading of Proposed Ordinance 1600 and.
Okay, thank you.
Dispense with the actual reading?
I'll follow your guidance on that, for sure.
That is your motion?
I'll second that.
Chesak, second by Johnson. All right. Any discussion on that motion?
Um, that, that require five of us sitting out of six.
All of us. Mr. Krambek?
So, again, this is just the first reading. The next meeting, the City Council would have to consider the rezoning. So, a couple options. You could just conduct the first reading at this meeting and decide everything at the next meeting, or the second and third option would have to be contingent upon the rezoning.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion should be then just conduct the first reading?
Conduct the first reading, dispense with the actual reading, and a vote must be unanimous to dispense with the actual reading.
Okay, so that, that would be my motion then?
All right.
If it wasn't clear, so.
Yep, we got it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's just move on that one.
Question on the motion, Mr. President. Does there have to be a public, was there a public hearing at Planning and Zoning?
There was.
So, we have to have one?
That's correct. There was a pu- a public hearing at the Planning Commission.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none? Let's go to a vote. Tony, roll call.
Jaeger?
Yeah.
Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes. That first reading carries. And next, we have the, the next two options. We could move forward with, uh, contingent on that rezoning next meeting. I have no problem doing that if that's what we want to do. So, the, the next motion we would be looking for is approval of the attached resolution, amending the future land use map from medium-high density residential to commercial contingent upon approval of Proposed Ordinance 1600.
Sole moved.
Second.
Additionally, the, uh, rezoning.
Uh, so number three as well?
No, conditioned upon the passing of the order.
Got you, got you.
Or is that what the rezoning is? Oh, never mind. Yeah.
Already stated in there.
Yeah, we already read it.
Uh, motion by Johnson, second by Chesak?
Sir.
Any discussion? Tony?
Jaeger?
Yeah.
Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes. That resolution carries. And next, we're looking for approval of a conditional use permit to allow for the operation of an animal clinic as presented for parcel 41290683 contingent upon approval of Proposed Ordinance 1600.
Sole moved, Johnson.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Discussion on that? Seeing none? Let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. All right, moving on. From 10E, we move to 10F. This is a review of Voyager Heights EAW and holding the public meeting required. Again, this is Community Development Director James Krambek.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, prior to a final decision by City Council, the council is required to complete an environmental assessment worksheet, the EAW, for the development as there are over 150 proposed units for the project. Uh, tonight is the required public meeting. Staff emailed a redesign of the site, uh, earlier today. Uh, the two buildings to the south were combined to one larger unit to accommodate the stormwater redesign. redesign. As of now, the proposed one-hundred-and-ninety units is being reduced to one-seventy-six total units, with potential to expand in the future. Keepers is planning to reapply for the December and January Planning Commission meetings. It was determined that a portion of the property is located in our drinking water supply management area, in a high-vulnerability area for surface water contamination. The infiltration ponds are being moved outside of the D U S M A to allow for infiltration according to the city code. Staff did include comments from other government agencies. Westwood Engineering is not present at this meeting, but will be at the next. A representative from Keepers is available for any questions of City Council. Again, this agenda item is meant for City Council to thoroughly review the EAW document and direct staff to gather any additional information needed. We certainly work with Westwood to gather that information for the next meeting, in order for City Council to make a final determination at the next meeting. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kramvik. Does anybody have questions? I trust everybody got through the entire document. So, if you don't have questions, or if you do have questions related to additional information that you would want from this EAW, please ask.
I'm just glad they took care of the long-nosed bats again.
Oh, the long-nosed bats?
Yeah, soft-eared bats, what are they?
Maybe the long ear?
Two long fuzzies.
It's funny that a bat would have long ears. Actually, no, it's vision, never mind.
They require...
Yep.
Yeah.
It's getting late.
Yeah.
It's nine-twenty-one.
You should just go to bed. Yeah, you should leave the bat comments to other people.
Well, Batman had long ears. Makes sense. Anyone else? It doesn't look like we're looking for any more information on this, so, there, we held the public meeting. Moving on to ten G. This is approval to seek a grant to extend the height of fence, the fence line at Memorial Softball Fields, and this is Public Works Director Mike Abigors.
Thank you, Mr. President. Staff is requesting approval to pursue a grant opportunity to fund improvements at Memorial Park Softball Fields. The proposed project would include extending the height of the fence on the sideline and backstop to provide additional protection for the spectators, and to install a new fence for home run balls near the pickleball courts in that area. The park board has approved this grant request, and staff is recommending approval for the proposed improvements at Memorial Park Softball Fields. Anyone can take any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Abigors. Mr. Chazak?
Do you have an amount, a total amount of the grant you're seeking?
No, that is one of our, when we submit this, it will be a proposal from a contractor to install this home run fence and the additional fencing.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Given that, I, I don't even see how this fits into our grant policy if we don't even have an amount or a local share or anything. It's kind of really tough to make a financial decision without given numbers.
It is tough. That was, that was my next question, is what's the local match on it?
We would be indicating that there's no local match, that we don't have funds to provide for this.
Okay.
So, that would be a given.
Okay. You never know what other traps they're going to throw in there. It might not be a local match, but they might have some other kind of trap in there, too.
Sorry, I might be misunderstanding. So, you're, you're asking for permission to apply for the grant, or approval of the grant?
No, to apply for it.
Simply to pursue it, and then...
And it is going to be well more than...
If awarded, we could approve or deny.
Correct.
Yeah.
Would we come back, Connie, would we, we would be coming back after we were awarded it for acceptance of that money?
So, it'll come back before us, and we will understand the dollar amount, the match, and all that at that time. Is that correct?
Correct.
Mr. Mayor? And I just want to double clarify. We are not pursuing a grant in which we have any type of match. So, this would be a grant we are applying for with no local match. Okay, I just want to make sure we have that on the record. Right. Okay. All right, looking for a motion to give permission for this grant to get those fences to move up higher. Motion by Bevins?
Second.
Seconded by Erickson. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Johnson?
I can't in good conscience support this. I don't know who we're applying to the grant from, I don't know what the amount is, I don't know how much local share is, I don't know what the lifespan of this grant is, and is it going to be in seven years, we're on the hook for two-hundred thousand dollars? One million? We don't know. I can't approve something that I know nothing about. So, I just can't in good conscience support it, so it'll be a no.
I get it, but I think we just learned it. We will get those details to approve or deny if we are awarded, so I'm comfortable with it. I don't know if anyone else has comments.
Yeah, Mr. President?
Mr. Chazak?
I know many times when we ask, we ask, there's a request to go out for a grant opportunity, we generally know what that is. In this case, we're just saying, go see what you can get, and we'll get the details when it comes back, if there is anything coming back, and then we can either vote it up or down at that time. So, I understand Mr. Johnson's concern, but I think that we should just give him an opportunity if someone wants to spend a time and seek a grant, and they can get it. More power to them.
You could add to a motion that this is brought back to council, just to make sure, before we approve any acceptance of a grant. But it sounds like that's already going to happen, but you could add it into the motion just to be sure. If anybody's going to make a motion.
Already made the motion.
Oh, you did make the motion.
I did. It's been seconded.
Are you going to change it at all, or keep it the same?
Not at all. I'm confident with having told the truth.
All right, should we vote on the motion?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign.
Aye.
We have two noes.
I don't like it.
All right, that motion carries. That is it for new business. Moving on to staff reports. Start with Tony Gage. Chief Holmes.
Nothing to add, thank you.
Chief Davis. Max Henon, CLC. Connie? Mr. Abigors?
Just Friday, December fifth, we have a Christmas tree lighting at five P.M. in the parking lot.
Can't wait. Mr. Kramvik?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, we have a busy EDA agenda upcoming this Thursday. The EDA will be reviewing a residential development proposal from CMHP to develop a portion of the Wright Street extension. We'll also be reviewing the consultant contracts for 2026, as well as a brokerage agreement extension. Receive an update on the Washington Street mitigation plan that was proposed from the chamber. Also be reviewing a facade and signed grant proposal, and then approving the 2026 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Kramvik. Mr. Langle?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Mr. Dean?
Oh.
Mr. Sandy?
I kind of prefaced this during the budget presentation. We had the opportunity to host Representative and Senator Heitzman at the Hydro Dam facility, and they will be hopefully carrying a couple of bills for us this year to potentially fund our generator project at the Hydro Dam. So, just want to express my gratitude for them stopping out and taking a tour of that facility, and hopefully carrying that legislation for us through the, through the bonding process at the legislature. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy. Eric Sharfent here. I know you're out in outer space somewhere.
No updates this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Eric, from the moon. All right, Mr. Broyles?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just an update on staff's work with the revised charter language. I think we're getting closer to some proposed language that we'll get before the Charter Commission and the City Council. We're anticipating the next, the Charter Commission meeting will be on December seventeenth. It has not been noticed yet, but we will get that notice soon. We're on, we're on schedule to meet that deadline, and we'll see where it goes once we get it before the Charter Commission and some day before the City Council. That's all I have.
Thank you, Administrator Broyles. Next, we have the Honorable Mayor Bedeau.
It's twice now you've called me honorable, and I appreciate it. So, I don't have a lot to talk about, because I was going to talk about the tree lighting. I appreciate it, thank you, Mike. But I just want to make one point. Kevin Jaeger, tonight you had said, and you asked a question, you know, is there any, is there any funding coming from the state on some of this stuff that they pushed down on us? And I want to just thank you for making that comment, because this happens a lot in Minnesota. A lot of people like to feel good about themselves, so they like to make some laws that say we got to do a lot of things, but then the state doesn't follow it up with funding to get it done. So, they, they love to tell us what we got to do. They love to tell us what we're going to get done, but then they don't like to follow it up with funding to let us get it done. And so, I just want to make sure that everyone heard that tonight. When these projects come through from the state, that it sounds great, it's wonderful, we love our environment, we love to get it done, but if you're going to do that, then help the citizens out, because all you're doing is putting it on the taxpayers' backs locally and making it look like we're the bad guy, when really that stuff's coming from the state capital. So, end of rant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nice and short. Mr. Chazak?
Yes, Mr. President. I enjoyed a four-dollar double molasses cookie today. It was the best cookie ever, and you can find those cookies at a nutrition center out in Baxter, Minnesota. They are homemade, they are made with natural ingredients, and it is fantastic. That's all I got.
That's all, all right.
Four-dollar cookie.
Chazak?
Four-dollar cookie.
Nothing to add to the cookie.
Yeah, wow. How do you beat that?
Can't.
Half price, don't.
Probably a Brainerd cookie.
Maybe a Brainerd cookie for three dollars and ninety-five cents.
Yeah, I bet we could do it. Mr. Jaeger?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick airport ticker update. We had our first snow event, as I'm sure you are well-known, and I'd like to just thank our staff, who, everybody was out there, all hands on deck. This was not really an easy one. It was heavy, wet snow, gave us some problems with some gates, it gives us all kinds of problems with this unexpected, heavy, wet snow early in the season, but we made it through. And again, I'd just like to extend my appreciation to not only the guys that were on the ramp and on the field and everywhere, but the whole team that got us through that with a high degree of urgency.[1633.83]